Los Angeles City Council, I'm gonna ask anybody who's in the aisle, please clear the aisles. And, and do not be at the podium unless you're called. Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman? Thank you. With that, welcome. Today is Tuesday, January 27th, 2015. I'm Mitchell Englander, and I wanted to welcome you all to the City Council. We are live on Channel 35 and also streamed over the internet. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Busciano, Sodio, Englander, Fuentes, Weeza, Caress, Correia, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Weston, ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval in minutes.
Mr. Bonin moves, Mr. Busciano seconds. Next item, please.
Communal resolutions for approval.
Mr. Fuentes moves, Mr. Caress seconds. Next item, please.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I can get everybody in council chambers to please rise for a flag salute, please rise for the flag salute, and I would like to ask Councilmember Bill Rosendahl to, we're gonna bring you a mic, and if you would, welcome here. Let's give him a round of applause. Sir, please lead us in the flag salute.
Put your hand over your heart and say after me, "Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. It's good to see you here as well. Welcome. Thank you. All right, members, if I can direct your attention to the agenda, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda now.
Item one is an item known for public hearing. There's a request to continue item one H to February 24th, and item one I to tomorrow, January 28th, and the Department of Building and Safety reports that items one A and one G may be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. However, there are cards on one as well, so we'll go ahead and hold one on the desk for now. Next items, please.
Items two through eight are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, councilmembers, colleagues, do we have, yes? Special, please. Five and six called special by Mr. O'Farrell. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Caress?
I'd like to call number two special.
Two special by Mr. Caress. Colleagues, any other specials? Seeing no other specials, we'll open the roll on the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Great, thank you.
And, Mr. President, item number three, the ordinance will be held over for one week for second reading unless we consider it.
Great, that'll be the order in case we manage to get a couple more members. Okay, before we move on, colleagues, I'd like to also welcome some special guests here that we've got in council chambers today. I want to welcome some exchange students. Today, we are blessed to have nine students from Beijing High School, number four, who are engaged in an exchange program. If you can please rise, there they are. At Marlboro, visiting here at City Hall today. Marlboro School is an independent urban school serving a diverse group of young women. Founded in 1889, Marlboro is the oldest independent girls' school in Southern California. Get this: 100% of the class of 2004 will attend a four-year college/university. With that, we want to welcome you here to Los Angeles and the City Hall, and wish you much success in your academic endeavors. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much to Marlboro for hosting these girls. Marlboro is in the fourth district, right in the heart of the Wilshire District, and also want to say xie xie, and great job on the Olympic Games that they did in Beijing. Xie xie xie!
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Busciano for a special introduction as well.
Ni hao ma, and welcome. Ni hao ma. If I may introduce Rosalia Kucko from Zagreb, Croatia, who has joined us here. Welcome to our John Faro City Council chambers. We recognize and celebrate our ongoing relation, sister-city relationship with split Croatia. So, Rosalia, welcome and enjoy your stay here in Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much, and we've got, now we're gonna go ahead and go over to presentations, if we could. So, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Bonin to set up for his presentation. We can go ahead and run through the rest of the agenda while he's doing that, and getting prepared. Madam Clerk, if you can take us through the rest of the agenda as well.
Items nine through fifteen are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, those are considered without objection. It'll be the order. Mr. Parks?
Call fifteen special, and if we could have it out of order, we have family members here.
We'll go ahead and take that out of order for Mr. Parks, for family members, and, Mr. Parks, there are cards on that. Mr. Caress?
I'd like to ask that we receive and file number fourteen.
Fourteen, to receive and file? Okay, is there a second? Oh, there are cards on fourteen. I didn't have cards marked on fourteen, but we do now, so we will come back to that and call that special as well. Other items? Seeing no other items, we do have cards on nine, eleven, and thirteen as well. So, I believe that leaves item twelve. Okay, so, and item ten. Item ten, I show we have cards on ten now? We have a card on ten, so it leaves item twelve. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Great, that'll be the order for item twelve. All right, now we'll go ahead and turn it over to the presentation from Councilmember Bonin. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you. Good morning, colleagues. Once upon a time, there was a great public affairs broadcaster, who over the course of seventeen years did 3,000 shows? 3,000 shows, giving people a window into the public process, giving them a way to understand the issues and the questions that were before them on the ballot. A few decades before that, many of us probably grew up watching Schoolhouse Rocks, and could probably recite the jingle. I'm sure Mr. Busciano could do it if I asked him how a bill becomes a law. In terms of public education, in terms of getting people involved in the political process and understanding the issues, there are some new kids in town. One of them, I'm very proud to introduce, is a former Rosendahl and a former Bonin staffer, Nate Kaplan, who a couple of years ago, with a friend of his, Chip Houghton, is it Houghton?
Yep.
Chip, formed an organization called C-Political, which produces easily-understood animated videos for people who aren't particularly plugged into the political process, so they can understand the often confusing and very long list of ballot questions we have here in the state of California. I believe we have a video clip to show of one of their clips. No, we don't? Okay, we were supposed to, but we don't. I will tell you, though, that the videos they do are brief, they're informative, they're engaging, and they've sort of spread like wildfire. Nate has worked to get them broadcast on YouTube and on a number of different platforms, and the results have been phenomenal. Because Nate comes from the Rosendahl School of Public Engagement, it isn't something that he and his friends just do themselves. They decided to broaden the circle and to reach out to some of our local schools, and they've been working with Otis and USC, and Otis actually created a course in C-Political, where the students helped research and helped actually produce the videos that C-Political used. So, I'm gonna let Nate talk a little bit about what they do, and then we'll also hear from Mr. Rosendahl, who's a member of the Board of C-Political.
Thank you, Councilman Bonin, for inviting us here today. It is truly an honor to be back in these chambers. These chambers have changed my life in so many ways. I have made lifelong friends, many of them standing near me here, that'll always be part of my life. I came up with this very idea, right there, right behind Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, where Bill used to sit. And this is where I came up with an idea to engage and create entertaining content to get more people to show up and vote, which we know in this city is a major problem. What we've been able to do, why this has been so successful so far, is we've been able to bring three worlds that almost never sit at the same table together. We've been able to take the public policy and the politics side of things, the animation and the design and entertainment value, and the world of academia, and bring them all together to engage and teach people 18 and over what these issues are that we're supposed to be voting on. So, unfortunately, we don't have the video to show here, but it's, you can check out our videos, and we passed out a little pamphlet, and our website is real simple, S-E-E-C-Political.com. And what we do is create videos in English, in Spanish, and we're actually working on a video to explain Charter Amendment one and two, which is council-proposed, in Farsi as well, which will be ready next week for viewing. We'd love for that to circulate across the city, so we can get more people interested in understanding what those two issues actually mean, because they're very important and have a huge impact on this council. And I just want to thank everybody for inviting us here. Our ultimate goal is to be able to be anywhere in the United States and type in your address on our website, and every issue that you're expected to be voting on will be accompanied by a video, whether it's a ballot measure or a candidate's statement. We want to make voting fun and easy, and we want to make you think, and we want to make you laugh. That's our goal. Thank you. And two of our great partners here are Imaginary Forces, which is an animation studio located here in West LA, right on the straddling the line of CD V and CD XI on Sepulveda, and Otis College of Art and Design, which has been an incredible partner in teaching their students, who might not usually learn in this much depth about civics and politics, actually produced content where five million Californians watched our videos 12 days before the election in November, due to a partnership with ABC and Univision. So, I want to thank them and invite Chip up to the podium to say a few words.
I'm just gonna introduce Bill, because that's who we all really want to hear. So, Councilmember Bonin, thank you very much for bringing us and inviting us down here. And Bill, the mic's going over to you.
So, I, the three most frequent questions I get out in the district are, "Why can't you fix our sidewalks?", "What are you doing about traffic?", and "How is Bill Rosendahl doing?". So, if you could answer all three.
Well, let me first say, can the control room get that video back on? Shame, shame, shame. You all know I come out of the cable business, and there's no excuse for that. Just get it together and make those things happen. Look, the bottom line is this: empowering people, giving them information, helping them understand the political process, is the democracy at its best. When I had the opportunity to do that television show for 16 years, I mean, every aspect of a question was asked. It was true journalism, the kind of journalism you don't see a lot of today. You see a lot of people on TV full of themselves that are opinion-makers when they should be playing journalists. They should be asking the who, what, when, where, and why. And that's what we did with that television show, and we ended up having a huge audience. It was everybody who had cable, from Malibu all the way over to Eagle Rock. They were informed, and educated, and empowered by the channel that I created and had the pleasure of ministering. The same time, I was a big believer and supporter of public access. The public's right to get in front of the camera, because the people own the airwaves, and being able to speak about issues that are important to them. And right now, you're on the verge of having to make some decisions. Well, you got a prop coming on the ballot. You have to figure it out. Now, if you see the little characters, you will see that they explain it up and down and backwards and forwards. So, everybody will be empowered. It's the key for the future is empowering people. I see this app as an opportunity, C-Political, to empower people and give them the opportunity to participate with the proper tools in a democracy, which is knowledge. And I want to thank Mike Bonin, you know, he was great working for me. Let me just say, he was an incredible chief of staff, and I could trust him 100%. And to see him now in office flourishing the way he is is a beautiful thing for me, and I'm very happy and I'm very proud of him. Mike Bonin, you're the best.
Thank you. So, we've got three certs. One is for Otis, who's accepting on behalf of Otis. You don't, you don't have to speak. C-Political, now you can take that, and Imaginary Forces. And we will do photos in the back. I have certificates individually for each of you, and we'll do that in the back. Thank you, colleagues. Oh?
I think we might get the video going.
Oh?
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, we do have some on the queue. Sorry, I didn't have the screen up. Mr. Caress?
I just wanted to say how great it is to see Bill here, first of all, and in another city, I followed your cable show for many years, and it's really the prototype for a way to involve people. I had one of my neighbors in West Hollywood, who I always thought was completely non-political, didn't follow anything. The one thing he did, shocked me when he told me, was he watched your show religiously. And I think it was partly because you weren't someone that just expressed an opinion, you really didn't even know where you were coming from personally, because you just did the journalism and addressed the issues of the day. And I think that is sorely lacking. Hopefully, you will help pull the kind of people that I think Bill interested in the political process by what you're doing, and I thank you for it as well. But great to see you, Bill. Glad to see you here.
Right, Mr. Fuentes? Mr. Labange?
I'm sitting.
Depending on where you're sitting.
Mr. President, because several years ago, I was sitting here on this side, the alphabet changes on our council, and Labange was sitting here, and next was the councilperson of the 11th district. And that afternoon, I was going out to do a show, a show at the Public Affairs Show that the Century TV, yeah, Century Cable. Before that, what was it, the Z-Channel? Was it ever the Z-Channel? Before? Okay, we're getting a little history here. Anyway, the point being, I asked the representative of the 11th district if they had anyone in the race, Mr. Bonin, because the 11th district was terming out. And they said no. So, the first thing I did when I got out there, I took my hand, I put it right on his tie right there, and said, "Bill, you're a great guy. You should think about running for city council." True or false? Okay, and that started the whole ball rolling and the great service that you had. But the one thing I do want to note, and you complimented Mr. Bonin so much there, the one thing I do realize, you did not leave him any ties that you had over the years, because he's only won one once. Mr. Rosendahl, it's great to see you as a fighter, what you've always fought it, and the work that Mr. Bonin is doing is exactly how you envisioned in the sense of serving the people of the 11th district so well, and the work at the airport on the MTA. Mike's gotta know that Bill is feeling real good about how you're serving. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak here
Of course.
from where I once did stand. Thank you.
Mr. Labange, you can speak anywhere. Yes, thank you. And with that, let's give them another huge round of applause.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, in the chambers. Thank you, Mr. Bonin. With that, let's go ahead and turn our attention back over to the agenda on items on the supplemental. Madam Clerk?
Item 16 is an item for which a public hearing has been held, but there is a request to continue that item to January 28th.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue the item without objection. That'll be the order.
Items 17 and 18 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, those are considered and without objection. That'll be the order, and on 17 and 18, I believe we have cards on both of those items, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and hold both of those items for cards. We have a request now out of order to take item 15 for Mr. Parks. Before we do that, Mr. Parks, I want, let me ask, we have, I know the family's here, is that correct?
Yes.
We have, we have three cards from John Walsh, Donna, and Deborah. Before you come up to speak, I want to let you know that the family is here, and to respect that as well. I also understand that you have cards on virtually every other item, so you'll have plenty of opportunity to speak, and wanted to find out first if they were still interested or waiving their time. And if so, I will ask that you speak after the family and ask that you speak after Mr. Parks. John, first, to you, I want to ask, pass, thank you very much. Donna? Donna, I'm just simply asking if you're going to speak. Are you planning on speaking? Then you'll speak after the family, and after Mr. Parks. Deborah? Pass, thank you. Oh, Deborah's the family. I apologize. Okay, we'll hold Donna's card. I will turn it over to Councilmember Parks now. Thank you. If we can have the council chambers, the folks on the side, keep their voices down just a little bit. This is very important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd ask Ms. Holt to come up to the podium along with her family members. Today, we do not have officers here, but I will give you the substance of what this case is about, and then ask Mrs. Holt to introduce her family and also make some comments to the public. On January the 4th, at approximately 2:35 a.m., a motorist in a silver or tan vehicle, possibly a Honda, Toyota, or Volkswagen, was traveling east on Slauson Avenue at the intersection of Dinkerton Avenue. The motorist collided with a pedestrian that was attempting to cross the street. The impact of the collision caused the pedestrian The impact of the collision caused the pedestrian to sustain life-threatening injuries. The motorist continued east on Slauson, failing to stop or render aid or identify himself. The pedestrian passed away at the scene. To date, the detective's been unable to identify the motorist responsible for the death of Triva Arnold. And so we're asking for a $50,000 reward, and we're asking anyone that has information to contact South Traffic Division Officer Yost at 323-421-2500. Ms. Holt, would you make your comments at this time?
Good morning. My name is Deborah Holt. This is my granddaughter, a niece of Triva Arnold, Talima Powell. This is her son, Kalen Booker. This is her daughter, Kayla Arnold. This is her nephew, Dante Harris. And my name is Debbie, Deborah Holden, and we're the family of Triva Arnold. On January the 4th, my daughter was struck by a person of persons, and she was left in the streets like an animal. I don't know if, when he hit her at the time, if she was alive, but the person didn't stop. This is a cold-blooded, heartless person. That was January the 4th. Today is January the, what, 29th? And he hasn't, he or she hasn't come forth. My daughter may not, you didn't know her, and she may not mean, meant anything to you, but she was somebody. She was our daughter. She was someone's aunt. She was someone's mother. She was someone's sister. And for a person to do something like this, knowing that you hit a human being, and you didn't stop, you didn't render aid to my daughter, is heartbreaking, is senseless. You know, as a parent, you never, you think when your children leave out, they're going to come back home. You never think that you're going to have to bury your children. And so I'm asking for the public's help, anybody that knows anything or any information, and I'm also asking for this reward. Maybe it will lead someone to say something, you know? It could be, it's my child, but it could be yours. It could be you. It could be me one day, when we're crossing the street. And this is happening so, so much. We have people out here that just seem to don't care about human, human life anymore. I'm not a great speaker, and I'm not trying to be one. I'm just pleading for my child, and that's all I'm just asking. And you know what's so sad is when, when a little child loses, loses their, their mother, father, you know, a little child has, they can sometimes get over it. But when you have grandchildren as old as mine, they know what's happening, and that's the hurting part. But I thought I was going to get old with my baby, you know? She never wanted to leave home, and I didn't care. She's, my kids can stay at home long as they're responsible, and she was. And she was a protector of her mother. She loved her mother, father, her children. She was so sweet. And the thing, she's a human, and I'm just asking for help, because we have a cold-blooded, cold-hearted killer out there. And not only that, he may have, he or she may have did this before, and we need to stop them. We need to bring them to justice. And so I'm asking, so another family does not have to feel the pain that we are feeling today because of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holt, and really appreciate your comments and your family being here. And also, just to make sure the public's aware, this is our third hit-and-run with a fatality in the last 15 months in that same general area. And so we'd ask that anyone having information on this case that happened on January the 4th at the corner of Slauson and Dinkerton to contact Detective Yost, excuse me, at South Traffic Division. Also, if there's any information on the hit-and-run death of Diane Dupree, that occurred on October the 10th, 2014, at Crenshaw and 63rd. We'd ask you also to contact Detective Yost. And also, for the general public to be aware of, in July 2013, when Marquis Parish was killed in a traffic accident on Crenshaw, the detectives have located and prosecuted that individual. So we ask that we get an eye vote on this $50,000 reward.
Thank you. And to Mrs. Holt, to your entire family, on behalf of the city family, our condolences are with you. And as you explained, and as a father myself, as a parent, you're never expected to bury a child. It's absolutely the worst thing, period. And there's no name for it. When you lose both your parents, as I have, I mean, often, people refer to you growing up perhaps as an orphan. If you lose a spouse, you're a widow or a widower, when you bury a child, there is no name for it. And there's no name for a reason, because it's the worst thing that can ever happen. This is a crime. This is a coward that's out there. I want to thank Councilmember Parks for bringing your entire family here. It takes a lot of courage to step up and do that, and want to be there to support you all in any way we can. So, thank you so much. With that, Donna, we do have one card. Did you still wish to speak on this?
Since now this is hit-and-run, I'll just give my condolences. It's very scary as a pedestrian, I walk this, I have to cross streets, and my condolences that hopefully this will never happen again, and hope we get this person, get him high, and never get in a car again. So that's all I'm going to say, condolences, and I hope pain will ease eventually. I'm sorry for your loss.
Donna, thank you for that. Donna? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and, colleagues, turn our attention back over to the rest of the agenda. We have several items that were called...
Oh, we need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll go ahead and vote on that item. We'll go ahead and vote on that item on item 15. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Parks. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that item 14 be continued for 30 days.
Okay.
Rather than received and filed, as we asked earlier.
Okay, item 14, continue until February 27th. That'll be the order without objection. Thank you very much. That item will be continued, item 14. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take the special, item 18, called Special for Cards. Chris Otero?
Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. My name is Chris Otero. I work for an organization called Ability First. We provide services to children and adults with disabilities, over 2,000 annually. I'm joined by two colleagues, Deborah Donovan, Executive Director of Valley Village, and Cindy McCauley, the Executive Director of the Therapeutic Living Centers for the Blind. We all provide services to individuals in the city of Los Angeles and are very, are here to speak in support of the motion presented by Councilmember Blumenfield. And on behalf of a coalition of service providers, I'd like to read a letter in support of that motion. On behalf of the tens of thousands of Los Angeles residents who work for nonprofit organizations, we thank you for working to increase the wages and working conditions of all Angelenos. As employers, your nonprofit organizations want nothing more than to build, sustain, and support the kind of quality workforce that can truly serve the health, human, and societal needs of our city. The economic circumstances of nonprofit organizations are vastly different than the private sector. Since our missions are to serve the most vulnerable, the most economically disadvantaged, those most unlikely to have personal resources to meet the most basic standards of quality of life, we certainly do not have the ability to raise the prices to these customers in order to meet the higher wage levels you propose and our employees deserve. For this reason, we sincerely thank Third District Councilmember Bob Blumenfield for the resolution he presents to the council today. Councilmember Blumenfield's resolution clearly and accurately states that since the vast majority of nonprofits serving our city's most vulnerable disabled residents are economically controlled by the rates set by our state government, action by state government to adjust funding to meet the increased labor costs is essential. The proposed resolution calling for the city to advocate for appropriate funding adjustments for LA's nonprofits...
I got to ask you to wrap it up, or I got to do the same thing.
One sentence, Los Angeles nonprofits is both an economic imperative and act of the highest ethical standards. For these reasons, we applaud the Los Angeles City Council and anticipate them adopting Councilmember Blumenfield's resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Herman, come on up.
Someone can trip and fall. Just a reminder, since I'm on item 18, I won't take up too much of the public's time because it's not a presentation, but rather, we're referring and talking and speaking about the position regarding and establishing by Mr. Bonin and Mr. Blumenfield, a reimbursement of formulas for social service healthcare providers. If there's such an action by the heartfelt counsel of Mr. Blumenfield and Bonin, they should consider...
Back to the agenda, please don't address the council members specifically, but the body as a whole.
Excuse me, sir. Please don't interrupt me during the Brown Act. Your foolishness is not welcome. So to conclude, Mr. Blumenfield and Mr. Bonin, the services rendered under social services in your districts by Santa Monica and the Valley or wherever, is this: you're doing a horrible job and you fail. I'll hold my time to one minute.
Okay, Mr. Blumenfield, does he, yes, Mr. Labange.
Someone jumped over the rope there, which could cause harm to themselves, and asked the sergeants to inform the member of the public not to put themselves in harm ways by jumping over a rope.
Thank you. We'll note that, too, Mr. Labange. Thank you very much. Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. I just want to rise in support of this resolution. I want to acknowledge some of the folks who came forward, from Ability First, Valley Village, Therapeutic Living Centers. They all serve very vulnerable populations and are very much impacted by the minimum wage. This is a good proposal that we're putting forward, which is to basically to get the folks at the state level and the federal level to try and raise the reimbursement rates as we raise our minimum wage, so that these folks can have, because unlike businesses and others, they can't pass through these costs. This is another, this is a way to get those costs to come up, so that when we do right by the people who are in our nonprofit organizations, we can also do right by the people that they serve. So I urge you to support this resolution, which will engage our state and federal folks to increase those reimbursement rates. And I also ask that we improve the, we approve the CLA's report, as which is part of this resolution as we move forward. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll to vote on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and take Mr. Walsh. Come on up on items 1, 9, 11, 13, and 17. The cards for which you have filled out, 1, 9, 11, 13, and 17.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential and tweeting at HollywoodDems. Number one, again, is the liens. Anyone who pays these liens is a fool, because you folks out there who watch this all the time know that anybody that comes up here and protests the liens, the phony liens, for any reason, they're stepped aside, they step aside, they talk to their city councilman, and it's postponed for two weeks and they never come back. Why don't they come back? They're angry. Because the lien has either been totally erased or has been dropped significantly, because the lien itself was bogus. So again, if you have a lien, come here and get it reduced or forgiven, because it doesn't belong. Okay, number nine, and these, again, this is REAP. I haven't had too much trouble with my landlord because, because of REAP. Because my landlord, as your landlord out there knows, that if they don't keep their buildings up to code, the city is going to come in and, what is the city going to do? It's going to say, from now on, you pay us the rent until you repair. Again, when the city council and the mayor do a good job, going back, and I was here when Mayor Sam was here, I was here when Mayor Yordi was my mayor, when they do a good job, we're the first to congratulate them. Now, relative to the inclusion of the historic cultural monuments, we are in favor of the Delray Stone Pillars on Culver Boulevard being added to the historical cultural monuments. It makes it more difficult to tear these things down if they become historical cultural monuments. Some of the owners don't want it because they feel it lowers the value, because they can't sell it to a developer and have it torn down. So apparently, these people, the stone pillars owners are in favor. We're in favor of it. And there's another one here about the Apple House as a cultural monument. And you do tear down cultural monuments, but not very often, of course, we stop you. Number 13, and this is, this is about the greening of Cochrane Project, Board of Public Works. Again, another good job being done by the city council. Remember, we're here to back you up 100% when you, when you're doing a good job. And as it's shown here, the, you put in a great deal of excellent issues here. I mean, you haven't put anything real dirty in here. I don't know about, and number 17 is retirement. We're all in favor of paying our city workers a good retirement. I remember, and remember, our city workers are mostly minority. I go back when you had racists. I know what they said about black people.
You're not on the agenda, so if you want to stick to the agenda.
Too lazy. I'm telling you about, okay, on 17, what we're saying here is that city employees who are minority are not lazy. They are doing a fantastic job, and it should be pointed out that most of, the majority of our work, our workers in the city are minority. That wasn't true when I showed up here in 1966, but it is now, and people are able to be racist by just saying, oh, the teachers are these, they're lazy, and we shouldn't be giving them these retirement money. And I want to thank very much our chairman for attempting to interrupt me. And I'm going to give you a reward of 45 seconds of silence. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you so much. 45 seconds of my life I'll never get back. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and take Herman for items one. Just one. You spoke on the other items we've already cleared, so just item one.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to address the lien process here by local government as corruption. It has been defined as the abuse by you, Mr. Michelle Englander...
Okay, you're not on the agenda again. You gotta stick to the agenda.
...for the abuse of public power to enforce liens without the due process to much of your constituents here today. All of you people who have a lien against your property, the process is illegal because you are not certified...
He should direct his comments to the council.
...by mail regarding the liens. And I'll read the liens because Mr. Speaker there only wants me to speak on the agenda such as in CD 14, 2225 East First Street, a lien for $1,000. CD 14, 1400 South Lawrence Street, Mr. Weezer, $9,000. And what about yourself, Mr. 10th District, 12th District? See, I can go on and on about the liens and be as ignorant as you, Mr. Speaker, but the problem here is that there is no notification. You have created an assumption to take advantage of the services rendered to the public by due process, by corruption, scandal, and bribe. And you sit there angrily at me as you look at me because it's the truth, sir.
You're not on the agenda item once again. That's your third warning. If you're gonna waste the council's time, you'll be asked to leave.
When the hearing for protest, appeals, and objections relative to proposed liens for nuisance abatement costs are mentioned here, code violations should be brought down when your, when your constituents come here to talk to you. All of you, all of you who have liens against your constituents. You are so corrupted and so hard up for a dollar of your taxpayers, using public funds as a vicious cycle to result in the loss of people's homes by liens. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you so much. Juan, come on up on items 1, 9, 10, 11, 13, and 17. 1, 9, 10, 11, 13, and 17. Please stay on the agenda items, please. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. My main concern is item one. Why have you put it upon yourself to punish the people that elected you? You punish them by leaving liens that are not even existent. You just make up a figure and suck it to the people. Item one, a lien for $1,010.84 to the poor sucker that lives on 2225 East First Street, right nearby. You don't, wow, you don't, you don't forgive anybody. You are merciless mercenaries. That's what you are. Look, CD 14, again, is that a wealthy neighborhood? I don't think so. A lien for $9,728? Poor sucker, where are you gonna get that money? You are going to be homeless, homeless. That's, that is the key issue here. You are driving people homeless so you can give the contracts to the developers to build high rises and put people in pigeonholes instead of letting them live in their house. A lien on CD eight? Who the hell owns CD eight? For $734? Well, that must be a poor sucker. Oh, lien on CD six? Telfair Avenue? $1,224? What do you need that money for, City Council? So you can go on limo rides? So you can go to the Wall of China? I saw Garcetti and a bunch of you idiots over there walking on the Chinese wall, which was built as a barrier to keep out the barbarians. You are the barbarians. They should have, they shouldn't allow you to walk on the Wall of China. Anyway, the next, CD seven, a lien for $8,736. CD six, a lien for $1,224. CD seven, a lien for $2,802. I'm not even mentioning the cents because you guys make no sense. Your horseshoe here is full of horse shit. Anyway, Nor Brussels, CD seven, a lien for $2,802. I think I'm repeating myself, but it doesn't matter because that's what you do every day. You repeat yourselves against the people. Anyway, CD 15, West Anaheim Street, a lien for 600 and some dollars to some little lady that probably doesn't know what the hell is happening. And CD two, a lien for $1,681. You know, the last time I saw $1,000? That's when I was working for you assholes. A lien for $12,199? That's a whole year's salary for some idiots that sell peanuts at Dodger Stadium. They spend a whole year, well, half a year, selling peanuts and they only make $10,000. Is there any time left? Are there any other issues, really? Why are you driving everybody homeless? Who the hell elected you to create homelessness? Obama, Brown? You assholes are spending millions...
I don't think homelessness is one of the issues.
Well, they're spending millions on other things, but they're driving everybody homeless.
Yeah, you're not on, you're not on the issue. Thank you so much.
Why don't they understand about homelessness?
Thank you.
Huh?
Thank you, Juan. All right, with that, we have two other... Oh, yes, Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, I'd like to direct my comments to the city attorney to request that you visit with council at the Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education and see what guidelines they have. We do have young people present, and some of the language there is not the language that I think is appropriate. Would you please follow through on that, Mr. City Attorney? Check with LA Unified School District or county council at the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
I will do that.
...be treated the same.
All right, thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Labange. If you're gonna yell from council chambers, you're gonna be asked to leave, you're disrupting the meeting. You want to continue doing that? I didn't think so. Donna, item one and 17. Stick to the agenda.
We need our freedom of speech. Anyway, we have number one, we have Richmond's Welfare, who are forgiven, but no forgiveness for the, for a middle class. Yet you won't even give them a payment plan to help them. And you need to stop putting on late fees so the payment can't, because you want to make it so the payment can't be paid. It's a no-win situation having those late fees. Really check that the lien should be there in the first place. Probably not, just a way to get city money. So, and, so, let me go on what I really want to go. I'm for the city employees. They deserve, they, all the raises they could get, they deserve, I mean, they get especially lasers. And these are hard-working employees, and I want to tell you that black employees and non-black employees, city employees, are not lazy. So we may just not take it over a racial thing. I don't, I've heard that city employees altogether, but they're not lazy and I'm glad to see anything that you give them because these people with families that are taken care of, they're taking care of themselves, and they're being independent so that they won't be a burden to the people. And so, and really, we, I know this is a subject we really need to get video conferencing back because you're not letting the people speak.
You're not on the agenda.
So, that's it, and I guess I can't go back to number one.
You're on item 17.
17, yeah, I just wanted to say, yeah, they deserve everything they can, they, they do because I've seen a lot of them, a hard work, a lot of these people are jobs that don't, people don't want to do, working like in the sanitation, working in sewers, and these are jobs, so these are committed for people doing physical work, and they deserve everything they can get. And thank you very much.
Item 10, Eric Previn.
It is Eric Previn, a resident of Studio City and a candidate in the City Council District Two race with Mr. Krikorian. Item number 10 is Mr. Krikorian actually made a recommendation to nominate a property at 5122 Tahunga Boulevard to be considered as a cultural historical monument. It is designed by an architect named Robert Stacy Judge, apparently, although it's clear that just the exterior facade is. Nonetheless, the question really, because this came through the Chair of Planning and Land Use, is what is the plan with this facility? It is a longtime Freemason hall that, it's my understanding, is undergoing radical renovation on the interior now by a new owner. The new owner, it's my understanding, came in in January of 2014. Then I think this was submitted for designation sometime in February, if I have it correct. And then, believe it or not, it changed hands one more time, the property did, from the original owner, Thomas Bell, to, he gave it to a foundation, which is, I think I have that correct. It is quite confusing. And then, subsequent to that this morning, as I was looking for the item, I discovered that in fact it was submitted for cultural historical landmark status in June of 2013. So I guess the question is really for the council district to make it clear to the residents, what is the plan? It's nestled into a number of apartment condo sort of buildings. It's right next to our YMCA. They have been in the past very stingy about their parking, but more recently, they've been frankly quite accommodating, which is nice. They do allow us to use that parking. This is right opposite North Hollywood Park, for those in the district who are curious about where this property is. And, you know, I think it's important to bring these things in front of the public so we can have a sense of what's going on. There are a lot of properties in our neighborhood that would also be worthy of designation, and we're curious as to why Mr. Krikorian chose this one. So thank you.
All right, that concludes items for 1, 9, number 10, 11, 13, and 17. Once again, colleagues, 1, 9, 10, 11, 13, 17 will be before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, that'll leave us with item five, called Special for Cards. There's been a circulated amending motion. I'm gonna turn the chair over to our council president, Tom Labange.
And Mr. President, for item 17, the ordinance will be held up for a second reading for 30 days, which takes a second reading on February 27, 2015.
Thank you. So we have some cards right here. Bradley Hertz.
Hello, members of the council. I'm Bradley Hertz of the Sutton Law Firm on behalf of the AIDS Healthcare Foundation and Michael Weinstein. It's great to see Councilmember Rosendahl here. Back about seven months ago, this council passed the Los Angeles City Health Protection Act, which creates a city health commission. Since that time, there have been several productive hearings before the Budget and Finance Committee, as well as the Arts and Parks Committee. I'd like to thank Chair Krikorian and O'Farrell for that constructive process, as well as the CAO's office. We agree with everything in the recommendations of the two committees, other than item four. Item four is a recommendation to appoint council committee members, but then not have them meet until some budgetary concerns can be worked out and the language of the measure can be amended. Earlier this week, or late last week, there was a $100,000 offer to donate funds to assist the commission in getting off the ground. And we think in light of that, which can be placed into trust and administered by the city, that the resources will be there in the city clerk's office to address Brown Act, Public Records Act, and other concerns, and that we hope without delay, the 15 members of this commission will be appointed by the council members and the commission can start its important work. Thank you.
Eduardo Martinez.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Eduardo Martinez, and I'm here with a group of my fellow Angelinos to speak about the importance of the LA City Health Commission. These are my people here.
Come on up.
At a respect of the city council's time, I will speak in behalf of my group. We are here today to encourage you to adopt the recommendations of the previous two committees that address this matter. We will take, we would like to see you appoint the commissioners as soon as possible. We would also like to encourage you to have the commissioners' first meeting as soon as they are appointed. Let's, don't delay the city health commission over funding. This is an important issue for us. We thank you for working on the, on the issue, and we encourage you to make this a priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sergeant, will you assist on the microphone, please? A big hand for Mr. Rosendahl for his public speaking, Mr. Bill Rosendahl, please.
Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak on this issue. I've been supporting Michael Weinstein. I believe in his causes. I've known him since the early days of AIDS, unfortunately, when it took away my first partner, Christopher Lee Blaueman, and we became very close over the years. Michael is putting 100 grand upfront to work it out. Hopefully, the city attorneys can make it valuable so that we can go forward with this commission. I'm fortunate that my successor's talking about me going on the commission, which I'd be honored to be on there, and I'd be honored to make a difference in health issues in our city. You know, I personally am a psychiatric social worker, so I have some medical background. But also, my firsthand experiences on the reality of life also gives me an opportunity on health issues to play a major role if we could. And I think each one of you have somebody in mind like that, was a matter of funding and how to do the proper funding. I think this opportunity now presents itself with a way to conclude and make a difference. So I urge the council to support this, to let this 100 grand at the city attorney's office, can see the value in that, be used as it, and let's get this commission off the ground, and let's begin to make real progress on health issues with the city and the county jointly functioning on those issues. Thank you very much for my appearance.
You're out of time. We note your card. Thank you very much. Mr. Herman? I apologize, Mr. Arcala. Thank you. Mr. Herman?
Regarding Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, River Committee reports, the Los Angeles City Health Commission, strictly, Bill, do you really think this council's addressing the issue of the dollar here? The matter is not of principle here. The subject of matter, Mr. City Attorney, has to do with acquiring funding monies. You don't care about the minorities, African-American or Hispanic, dying from AIDS? Rather, you subject them to harm. But it's compassion that brings me here to discuss the instruction to appoint members who are not even scheduled on any commission, should not be on any commission, because it should be outreach of the public, quality of life from and by the public who are affected by the cruel reality of what bad health can do to you, how AIDS affects the majority of us in our lives. All of you in this horseshoe have one person in your family impacted by some... All of you in this horseshoe have one person in your family impacted by some terminal And I can't even mention how many of you in this horseshoe, even Mr. O'Farrell, cannot stand before the public and state how this council, in one year, from the date of this first commission's meeting, of its efforts and operations, really have taken no legislative obligations. Because if there's true obligation, I say, listen to Roy Bollard, Lucille Roy Bollard, and you might find the real federal dollars.
That completes your comments right there. Any other cards, Madam Clerk? No, thank you. Mr. O'Farrell, first speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, last July, just six months ago, council adopted the initiative ordinance that creates the Health Commission. Fifteen-member commission, one appointed by all council members each. That report was dual-referred to Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, of which I chair, and then Budget and Finance. One hiccup was that it was specified to be revenue-neutral and not from the general fund. That restriction presented a bit of a catch-22. So, over the course of the past five months, my staff, along with CLA's office, city clerk, city attorney's office, excuse me, CAO's office, have basically untangled that restriction, and we have provided a simple funding plan that then the Budget and Finance Committee heard. They provided additional instructions, and I want to thank Paul Krikorian for his leadership on that. And they are all consistent with the committee work that was done under, under my committee. So, what I would like and recommend, colleagues, so that we can get this going, and in the overall scheme of things, this is a pretty short turnaround, but I think, you know, we took this instruction from our colleagues very seriously and acted and are making this happen. So, therefore, I move that the Budget and Finance report, with the new motions, instructions included, and I ask for your eye vote, that we move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. O'Farrell both for his comments today and his leadership throughout this process and in moving forward with this next very important step. And of course, it's a delight to have Mr. Rosendahl here with us today, as we take this very important step forward. The motion, the amending motion that you have before you is simply to instruct the city attorney to evaluate the legality and propriety of receiving a contribution of private funds that would help offset the costs of this, so that there wouldn't be any general fund impact as mandated by the original ordinance that was passed by the council. So, if we approve this today, the city attorney will go back, make that determination that there is no concern, legal, ethical, or otherwise, and if not, then the ordinance would be drafted consistent with that instruction, and it would come back to you for a final vote. So, I ask for your eye vote, as amended.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you. I want to thank both Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Krikorian for their good work on this. I only have one question, which is, one way or another, we know we are going to fund this, and we're going to fund it soon, so is there a reason to include item 4 in this, where the meetings, the, the members don't meet until we've settled this funding issue? Or could we not just go forward immediately?
Well, let me have Mr. O'Farrell or city staff, if they could answer that.
Or both.
See, the CAO's over there.
I just know that accompanying staff is a Brown Act requirement, so there is a staffing requirement. We have whittled it down to the bare minimum of the requirement, so that we could give this committee, or commission, rather, up, up and running.
So, so what are we, what would you suggest, that we leave 4 in, or that we remove it and, and get it moving?
I can address that.
Mr. Krikorian.
So, recommendation number 4, the reason that we included this recommendation, the Budget and Finance Report, is that if the commission were to set meetings, it would implicate costs to the general fund, which are prohibited by the actual language of the ordinance. So, there, there, that was the catch-22 that Mr. O'Farrell was referencing. So, the idea was to instruct the commissioners not to set meetings, and therefore not to implicate those costs, until such time as there was further action on the recommendations of the city attorney. Since the action with item number 7 and 8 today calls for the city attorney to report back with recommendations, I think this is, this language is consistent with that, because they will be reporting back, and then the meetings will be able to be set after the ordinance is enacted with the city attorney's recommendations. But to do otherwise would necessarily violate the express language of the ordinance that, that prohibits us from spending general fund money.
Thank you, and I'd just say that this, this has been delayed a bit, a little bit longer than I think any of us would have liked, so hopefully, all those steps can take place expeditiously, and we can allow them to schedule their first meeting as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Ms. Flores, will you go to the center table and restate the city attorney's vision, so we're all the same? I just, for the record, this is important.
Good morning, council members. Senior Assistant City Attorney Valerie Flores. We've had an opportunity to look at the motion, and we are willing to go back and work expeditiously to explore the generous gift that's been offered, and make sure that there are no conditions or other impediments, and then we'll report back quickly on whether that's a potential funding source.
And, and may I just suggest, the trust account, check with the controller, it's like the foundations for the parks, for the library, whatever it is, that's a possible way. I just wanted the city attorney on record.
Right. If we determine that the city may accept the gift, then we will go ahead and draft an ordinance to set up a trust fund to receive it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Bonn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Krikorian, for trying to thread this incredibly difficult needle. The, the catch-22 was incredibly frustrating in committee. I think this motion and Mr. Weinstein's offer of donating $100,000 helps us get there. Just one thing I wanted to suggest that might make it move even faster, as city attorney and CAO look at stuff, if it takes a while to actually create the fund, if that's going to take us another 45 or 90 days to go through all the process, I believe that there are, in existence, from a few years ago, public benefit trust funds for different council districts. I don't know if it's still in existence, but there was one created for CD 11 when Mr. Rosendahl was on the council. It, I don't think anything was ever put in it, but there may be a fund in which the city could receive something, and then that, in the interim, could help get things going. Just a, a thought, something to look at. Thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion. No other speakers on the queue? Let's, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. Thank you. Fourth with to the mayor on that. Thank you. Mr. Parks.
See if we can get item 1C reconsidered. The property owners here wasn't aware of the process, so they weren't able to speak with Building and Safety, and we'd asked for two weeks.
Without objection on reconsideration? All right, so I want to reconsider this item, as Mr. Parks stated. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and also reconsider item 3. Open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
These matters are before us. The first one, Mr. Parks.
Continue.
On 1C.
Continue, two weeks.
Two weeks. Our Representative, Building and Safety, thank you. Two weeks consideration on item 3, Madam Clerk.
And for item 1C, that's February 10th.
February 10th on item 1C. All right, so now we're going to reconsider item 3 right before us, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. So ordered. Next item.
Item number 2, cause blessed by Councilmember Corretts.
Mr. Paul Corretts of the 3rd District.
I, I'd take the 3rd if Bob wants to exchange it with me, but it's actually the 5th.
Very good. I'm tested if you're listening to me, Paul. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I remain strongly in support of the Century City Center project, and I urge the council to approve the project's land use entitlements, deny the appeals, certify the EIR, and adopt the Development Agreement Amendment Ordinance. This project will represent a landmark achievement for the city and for my district. It will include the first new-build LEED Platinum High Rise in Los Angeles, a beautifully-designed building that will represent the city's commitment to green and sustainable development. This project will include more than 2 acres of green public space. It will provide numerous benefits to the community, including a portal for the Metro Purple Line Century City Station, extensive and creative traffic mitigation efforts, a peak hour shuttle service from Century City to the future Expo line, and substantial funding for regional transportation planning and improvements in the South Robertson and the Beverlywood areas. Every city body that has considered this project has endorsed it, from Planning Commission to DOT, to unanimous approvals by, by the Plan, what did I say, Planning Department to DOT, to unanimous approvals by Planning Commission and the Plum Committee. Each body has confirmed that this project will not generate more traffic than the specific plan allows, and that JMB Century City Realty and the city followed all the appropriate procedures in the Century City North specific plan that have been there for 30 years. This project is also a great investment in our labor force. It will create thousands of jobs for city residents. The developer has established a project labor agreement, including that it'll be guaranteeing that it'll be built with 100% union labor, and putting hard-working tradesmen and women to work in, in the city of Los Angeles and Century City. This project represents a $350 million investment in our local economy. I also want to note that the proactive approach by JMB Century City Realty to address concerns of more than 12 neighborhood groups and homeowner associations surrounding Century City has been exactly the type of engagement and outreach that ideally all developers should undertake. Again, I strongly support this project and its substantial benefits that will be provided in the Development Agreement, as negotiated by the mayor's office, the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, and myself, and I ask that we approve the project and its entitlements, certify the subsequent EIR, and adopt the Development Agreement Amendment Ordinance in this landmark project, so it can go forward without any further delay. And I ask for your eye vote.
Mr. Corretts, thank you and your staff, your staff, your leadership, which is so important. I see city staff, stand up city staff, so you get some recognition for the hard work that you did there on this issue here. I do have a whole bunch of cards. They're all supportive of the project. If you support the project, stand up. You've been here for an hour and a half, so you don't support the project, I've got more cards. George, what are you doing out there, George? Anyway, no other speakers. Let's open the roll. Close the roll.
For the, for the record, a hearing has been held and satisfied in committee.
Thank you very much. The hearing has been held and satisfied in committee. Okay, I'm going to note the cards. These are for the clerk. Thank you very much. That being said, it was held in, in committee, correct, Mr. City Attorney? Thank you. So, open the roll. Yes. Mr. Bonn.
Just a, a quick question on this. I want to thank you for the incredible work you've done on this, Mr. Corretts. I, I think that this was not an easy one. Developments on the West Side tend not to be, and you and your staff did a lot of great work on this with all the stakeholders. There was, it was just a quick question I wanted to ask about the, the shuttle that's going to be running, and I think it's a question Ms. Brody was, was, was trying to raise. Is there, in the future, an opportunity for the developer to look at whether or not the shuttle can serve a different expo stop, if that's where ridership demand turns out, since we don't really know yet? Would the developer be willing, I don't think we need to enshrine anything today to, to upset the apple cart, but is that something they'd be willing to look at if a ridership demand is different in the future?
All right. Do you need a question answered on that, Mr. Bonn? Mr. Milstein, please.
George Milstein Latham and Watkins, representing the developer. Yes, we will look at that as part of our ongoing work with DOT over the next couple of years, as the project goes forward.
Great. Thank you very much. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Corretts, thank you. No other speakers on the queue. Mr. City Attorney.
And also, for the record, not all of the cards were in favor. There, there were some cards that were opposed, for the record.
For the record, and I misread that, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Mr. Corretts.
Since we offered the opportunity for people to stand up, just to be counted in support, I think we probably should give those who are here in opposition a chance to stand up as well, so, for the record, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for that. But we're here together. Mr., Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item number 6, cause blessed by Councilmember O'Farrell.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. What we have here, we have some incredible professionals who, for the past couple of years, have worked on what is called the Northeast Los Angeles Riverfront Collaborative, or River Collaborative. It is a program that was funded by HUD some years ago, and this group of individuals has been in the trenches, literally in the trenches, literally in the trench of the river over the past couple of years, doing all sorts of research and collaboration with the local communities, that has led to what is before us today. And the NILA Collaborative has reported to my committee on a couple of occasions, the ad hoc, I'm sorry, not ad hoc, Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and LA River Committee, and I would just like to recognize them, because there's a group here who has done this incredible work. Please rise Gerardo Ruvalcaba from EWDD, George Villanueva from USC Annenberg, Christine Saponara from Planning Department, Jenny Scanlon, I think she isn't here, if I'm not mistaken, EWDD, Jason Ching, and John Yunai of Tierra West. These individuals make up a critical, credible, critical bulk of the work that has been completed and presented, and what they have done is they have provided us a roadmap for improvements at the Los Angeles River, the kind of improvements that we really have been seeking for many years, as defined by the River Revitalization Master Plan that was adopted nearly eight years ago now, that provide the vision. That vision lives on, real work is being done. The city now more than ever needs to have the building blocks in place to actually fulfill that 50-year vision that we have created together. One of the ideals, one of the objectives, I would say, is enhanced increment financing district along the Los Angeles River, so we can actually create a permanent revenue stream for improvements along the Los Angeles River, conversion of brownfields, affordable housing, habitat restoration, parks, passive and active opportunities along the entire 31-plus miles of the river through the city of Los Angeles. And what they have provided us as a critical component to that vision, and provides a roadmap, that we will be hearing in my committee many, many times in the coming months and years, as we, as I mentioned, put those building blocks in place to see real improvements at the Los Angeles River. So, again, I want to thank the work of the collaborative, and I also would like my colleagues, all of you, to support the instructions to continue these efforts. Again, thank you, and I ask for your support.
Absolutely. And, Mr. O'Farrell, thank you for taking the river further downstream than anyone has. We appreciate it. Thank you, staff and others. No speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings council to general public comment.
General public comment at this time? It's a one-minute public comment. Mr. Icaula?
I will use the language that I want to use, because we have freedom of speech, you idiot. You call it freedom of speech till somebody says something you don't like, and somebody that uses flowery language. Well, I heard you curse like a sailor out there on Hollywood Boulevard, Mr. Labange. And then I've seen you gone into a bar to drink like a fish. You remember when we first met? I still remember. You all walked into this nice restaurant, and you all had your nice drinks and everything. I remember everything. So, quit saying that my, apologizing for my language. I apologize for your actions. You're a bunch of thieves. You're a bunch of idiots driving people homeless. Go to hell, you all.
Good morning, members of the city council, council president. My name is Bill Hui. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition, fairhousingcoalition.com. We're an organization that believes in equality for landlords and renters. Recently, I shot a video of housing inspectors breaking into tenants' apartments when they're not home. It's on the internet. You can see it, fairhousingcoalition.com. What happened is, the housing department was harassing a tenant, a landlord. He went to court, he proved his case, and he won, and the housing department was ordered to leave him alone. They went to another judge, I don't know what they told the other judge, and they got a writ, a warrant, to go into every apartment in all his buildings. There were tenants who left signs on the door saying, "Do not enter my apartment when I'm not home." They disregarded that, and they went into the apartments, and when they left, the apartments were left unlocked. This is outrageous. I have a meeting with the FBI on Thursday. This is going to be national publicity. I wish somebody on the council would work with me to put a lid on the housing department. This is illegal. Thank you.
Donna Paramon.
It was good to see Mr. Rosendahl here. He said he wanted people to have access to speak. The Valley needs to speak. Valley needs better access with video conferencing brought back in Van Nuys. I want to be speaking Van Nuys. Was hitting on the arm across the city hall because of my opinion. I want my right to my opinion. Not my President, Mr. Obama, has not helped us, helped the US, has not helped blacks. ISIS is a real threat, needed to, we need to take care of that. We need to stop the funding first, so they won't, hard for them to grow. We are not safe under Obama. Our health care has not improved. We need to reopen Gitmo. We don't need it closed, because people are dangerous. This is not a safe area. We're in real danger from ISIS, ISIL, and Korea, and Cuba. We need to keep our country safe. Get rid of Obama.
Eric Previn.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and good morning, city council. It is one minute, so I'll try to be brief. Case file number 140138-S1, I think is on the mayor's desk. And I have to ask, because there was the suggestion that this was introduced, the public interest and necessity required the sale of this property. And I've looked at the price. It has not been put on the open market, and it is well below what seems to me comparable value, so I would ask the mayor to look closely before approving that. And I would ask Mr. Wesson, who's not here today, or he came and went, to instruct his staff to be a bit more responsive to serious questions about the way this meeting is run. He is simply, he's big-timing me about the issue of whether or not the visible public is a priority for the public. I think it is. Forget about me, and forget about the others who you've seen. It's about regular individuals participating in our meeting. And finally, I'm really flabbergasted that we are permitted, in this environment, to be, you know, sort of picking and choosing.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, you're welcome. Thank you. I look forward to working.
Bella Norris. Mary Norris. Bella Norris. Mr. Herman.
Local government has created a corruption of a system that is unexpectedly unequivocal to our rights. Federal ruling, Judge Pergensen, regarding our First Amendment right of speech. But more so, I want to talk to you about what Mr. Corretts did to me while I was standing at this podium, when he assaulted me. He assaulted me for freedom of speech. And I went this morning to the police commission and brought it to the attention of the Attorney General, Mr. Bustamante, and one of the commissioners, an African-American woman by the name of Paula, Paula, because she's aware of the systematic corruption and breakdown of public officials, taking advantages of services, threatening your constituents, and more so, preventing us from public time. Judge Pergensen, federal ruling.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, greeting you from the unsolved arson capital of the world. I got up at police commission two days after the Da Vinci Fire and said it was arson. Everyone said I was full of BS, and in fact, the FBI is now investigating criminal arson. And as far as free speech and the right to use cuss words, we got that from the federal court ruling. You can ask, we won that case. And as far as Viragosa for mayor, I mean, for governor, first he wants to be governor, then president, then chairman of the Star Trek Federation Council, so he can rule all the planets. In fact, he's going down to ignominious defeat. Vote for Gloria Molina, grit your teeth, and vote against Jose Wezar and Viragosa. Even Herb Wesson is supporting Kamala Harris. HollywoodHighlands.org. That completes public comment. Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for post-niferal.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, members? Any adjourned motions, members? Rise, please rise for adjourned motions, please. Have everyone's attention for adjourned motions. Mr. Bustano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we rise in honor as we adjourn in memory of Christus Harry James, born in Chicago, Illinois, on August 5, 1937, and peacefully passed away on January 21st. His parents both died at young ages, leaving Chris and his siblings orphans. Later, he moved to Los Angeles to live with his sister and her husband, where he met his wife, Ruth Jenke. Chris and Ruth married, and a few years later, a few days later, he reported for duty with the US Army. After discharge, he and Ruth began their marital journey. They lived in Inglewood and managed their fun and funky restaurant, The Mighty Mutt, which served hot dogs and hamburgers, and had their first child all while Chris completed college. After graduation, he began a long career in pharmaceutical sales with two young children. The family settled in Placentia, where he lived for 44 years, and where he passed in his family home. He is survived by his sister, Michelle Kay, daughters Carla Amundson and Claudia Hess, son-in-laws, and five very much-loved grandchildren. And Carla Amundson is a dear friend here, the family, and I know is a constituent of Mr. Labange, and to Carla and Bill, we send our heartfelt condolences, and our thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you.
Mr. Bonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask that we adjourn today in memory of Paul Bulkey. Paul is the father of Mike Bulkey, longtime deputy supervisor of Ivan Brathwaite Burke, and currently a metro board deputy who works for the West Side and South Bay Cogs. Paul died Thursday of natural causes at the age of 100. His funeral services will be held this Friday at noon at Holy Redeemer Chapel, Holy Cross Catholic Cemetery in Culver City. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Members, I ask for adjourned memory of Bob Boyd, a great USC basketball coach, Southern California native, went to Alhambra High, all CIF player, played for the Trojans, later coached them for many years, a great Trojan, Bob Boyd. Also, Tony Vera, who passed away recently in the desert area. He was a great television man and developed instant replay for the first time in 1963. A great one who transformed television with that technology. Lastly, Charles Wagner, I ask we adjourn in his memory, who lived a very good, long life, married for 60 years, survived by his wife Bonnie and his three daughters, four grandchildren. Special man, Charles Wagner. Let's go ahead and serve the city well on this date. The month is almost over, so let's work hard for the end of the month, and then serve the city well. Have a good day, everybody. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.